To advance this community, particularly in the last year. You know, you've pulled forth Indigenous People's Day, which was so amazing to add to our community as a holiday. But then, in this last filing for a planning board commission, we have added the freeholder language. It's incredibly racist, and I cannot believe that we've done that. So I just really ask you to join with a lot of other communities in Montana that have ignored this. Yes, should we go to the state legislature in 2023 and ask them to remove this? Absolutely. But what we should do right now is ignore the freeholder statute and just move forward. Ignore it. That should not be part of the application process. And we should allow anyone who's a part of our community that wants to be on this board to be able to do that. Look at their true qualifications, not whether they're a landowner or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, I think that's all the public comments. Commissioners, did we want to continue? Move this to the following agenda, or because there is a time? And I forgot about that. There is a time limit on our application processes. Is there anything that we need to consider tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Quentin.
As I stated before, I'm in favor of ignoring this law. And I invite any buddy to sue me over it. And I'll stand by that. I wouldn't mind taking action on this, but the way it's written, I don't know that we can anyway. To ignore the freeholder assignment to this. I'd just like to make it go away. Any thoughts on that? I'm open for it. But at this point, I'm ready to direct the city to ignore the freeholder requirement. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you, Quentin. So in our application, it states the freeholder, the word freeholder, correct? We've talked about this before, but it's late and I need a little.
Chair Hogue, and it sounds like it wasn't always advertised with the freeholder requirement and only recently was added. In the application.
Right, I feel like there was something on time, at the recent time that we started having this discussion for.
Well, yeah.
Because of the interpretation.
We have an opening. Planning Board.
So we can. I might need a little advice. Is Courtney here still? Courtney, on because the way the action item reads, we're sort of, are we trapped in discussing or making a decision completely based on the action item, or can we alter the language of it within? Or do we have to wait for another meeting to, to, for example? Like, I would like to make a motion to remove the word freeholder from our application process. But but where are action items different than that? So I want to just clarify.
Yeah, while I pull this up just real fast. So what you have on the agenda is discuss, approve, deny, the planning board's request to contact state legislature in support of removing the term resident freeholder requirements on city planning boards. And that was the request that the, the planning board made to the commission. So.
But wasn't that some time ago? Because legis, this legislature closed weeks ago.
It was a month ago.
I believe it was in January.
Right.
Okay, so what can we do today? So we can move forward.
You can discuss, approve, deny, what is on the agenda, which is the planning board's request to contact the state legislature. If you were going to amend your ordinance, which is what where the freeholder term resides, you would have to ask us to bring something forward to, to amend the ordinance.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair, just to I think, put it a little more clearly. There's, there's a state law requirement, but there's also a city of Livingston ordinance that says it's a requirement. So if we want to go away from state law, we probably still need to change our city ordinance to reflect what the commission wants. Because we can't really direct me to ignore the city's ordinances.
And I, I will move to put that on the agenda during my comment period to amend the ordinance. And I'll make a second at, at some point. Michael's right, yeah, we, we need to amend what's on the book, so.
And as far as the application process for this next member. Because we can't bring this to the legislature, so that has to be tabled. Because obviously, it's nothing we can do at this moment. But as far as the application process for I'm, as a commissioner, I would like to see that we do not consider the freeholder requirement within that application process.
We can drop that as soon as the city ordinance is changed.
Oh, but we, but we, that leaves this one position then still having to have that.
And we, we extend, we extend the.
Extend the application.
Application.
Process.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is a, I'm trying to remember the timeline for ordinances. Is it vote, wait two weeks, vote again, or is it vote, wait a month, vote again? I can't remember the time.
It would be it would be a resolution of intent at the next meeting. We would wait two meetings and have the public hearing, and then it passed 30 days later.
Okay, thank you. So it's about a two months? Ish? Thank you. I don't, yeah, I, and then, so Chair Hoagland, we have a quorum because this planning board is only down one person, so we still have a quorum. It's not like we wouldn't be able to carry on. And we did agree to not meet in May.
And you need to go on sabbaticals for the next month or two.
So I think if, you know, Vice Chair Schwartz wants to extend, I, we still have a quorum. Like six out of seven people.
Right, or withhold, let's make perhaps, let's withhold the the advertisement for application until we settle this issue.
But we've already published it.
Oh, okay.
It's already an official publishing.
Those people could still be considered, and you can still, you can re-advertise, can't you? So.
Well, we got to do it legally. I mean, do we extend it out, or I'll leave that up to Courtney and Michael to hash out, but there's no urgent need to fill that post.
Did you want to look at the staff recommendation for this item?
Can we do that next time?
Um, no, not if you want to move forward.
You're right.
Go ahead.
So I think we've been, been talking about this issue as if there's only two options, but that's not actually true. And the, the staff recommendation is actually the, the middle option. We could just continue to follow state law. That was option one. We could ignore state law by changing our city code. That's option two. But option three is to actually, or I think I put it down as option two on this one. Is to change the composition of the planning board, so it would meet the state law, but would also allow the inclusion of of non-property owners or non-freeholders. So you would just expand the planning board membership. We would, and you have several choices here. You could either make it a requirement that they not be freeholders, or you could just leave it open to anyone. Either choice would be available. Because the state law sets it as a minimum of seven members. You can exceed the minimums, so we could still meet state law and allow renters or non-property owners on the commission or on the planning board. In fact, if you added two for, specifically for renters or non-property owners, you would pretty much mirror the percentage of each kind of resident inside of the city of Livingston. It's about 40% renters. You add those two out of the six citizen members, it's about 40%. And we still have all the other members that could be renters that are specified in state law, i.e. the, the commission member could be a renter. The staff person could be a member. The county person could be a renter. There's no freeholder requirements on those specific pieces, so. Code two allows you, in this case, is the city recommendation, to stay within the constraints of state law until we can change it, but still allow for the participation of non-freeholders.
So it's sort of like having an at-large i- in a sense, kind of that concept of having someone from any district, in this case, any any property renter or owner.
Right, it'd be very similar to when you do a city-county planning board, and there's specific requirements for county members that live in the area that the planning board services. So those have to be members from that specific area. This would be likewise, and if you, and you could specify specifically, if you wanted to, that it is only for non-freeholders. Or you could leave it open at large either way, because you have complete autonomy over the extra planning board members, because the state law doesn't address them.
Chair Hoagland, can I have the floor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so the county does require, the county also has code at the state level with the freeholder language. They clearly choose also to ignore it. So I just want to clarify that point, and also, the planning board talked about this option and does not support expanding the board.
That is correct. They didn't support supporting, expanding the board, and they didn't support ignoring the law.
So can I finish, please? They did not support expanding the board, and it has to do in part with the function of meetings. It's already a seven-person board. So it's larger than the city commission, and so expanding it makes it even more to run a meeting with more people in it. So it was a specific conversation that we have, and we had, and we also did not support the freeholder language. And that conversation happened while the legislature was very early in the session. So the circumstances were different.
Okay, so. Where are we?
Well, I, the city planning board had a different recommend, has a different recommendation than the city staff. I think that Quentin had some ideas to move forward with the language and with the extending the application period. And that seems consistent to me with the conversations we commissioners have had at past meetings.
So the planning board disagreed with having more of it at large. I know I'm using the wrong term, but.
The planning board was opposed to expanding and having like nine people on the board or whatever the.
Why can't we? Why can't we have it as two of the members? With one being up two of seven?
That'd be a question for Michael and Courtney.
Can you, can you repeat the question so I make sure I understand it?
So changing our ordinance to read two of seven of the two of six, I guess, right? Because the seventh is a city staff, two of six are open to, you know, members, at-large members. I know it's the wrong term, but I don't know what word to use. At-large members who could be renters and/or property owners. And having two of those six. And just put in the ordinance and not adding extra people to the board.
So I think, I think you were referring to two of the four citizen members?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Sure, whatever that number is, yeah.
There's four citizen members that are required to be freeholders right now. You could change that, but then that's not in accordance with state law. If you add the two, then it would still be in accordance with state law.
Okay. And you guys consider that on the planning board, Melissa?
I do not remember us speaking about, no, what you just brought up, no, we didn't talk about that specifically. I don't remember anyone on the planning board being interested or willing in upholding the freeholder requirement. Nor supporting that language.
No, but then how do we follow state law yet? Plan it around what we think.
I, I think that's the choice we're being asked to make by the community is, are we gonna are we gonna uphold freeholder or not? You know, I think Quentin brought up, I thought Quentin brought up a path forward. And I thought that that was, yeah, so I think.
So Quentin, say it again, just so you can, and we'll get a second if anyone feels.
Can you remind me what, what I said?
Yeah, I can. You said you wanted the ordinance.
Yeah, amend the ordinance that we.
To amend the ordinance, and then also you talked about extending the application period. Those were the two things you mentioned.
Yeah, because we have advertised, is there any way we can postpone advertising anymore for a position until the ordinance is changed?
I guess if we don't receive any applications by the 24th, then it's easy to extend it.
Okay.
If we receive an application by the 24th, I'm not sure if we can extend it when we already have an application. That's a different.
Right, I, that, that I understand, yeah.
Well, we can deny the application. We can say no to it and open it up and then put it back in.
Exactly.
Just play the game.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm still in favor of amending the ordinance.
Yeah, me.
It's maybe not as fast as we want to do it, but I think it's the cleanest thing to do right now. Especially with the wishes of the board not wanting to expand it to nine members.
Okay, we have a.
So I, when it comes time for commissioner comment, I'll ask to have that ordinance amended, right? This is not the proper time to do it.
Right.
Or is it?
No.
You can absolutely do it now.
I can, okay.
We can? Well, we have to.
We have to approve.
We're tabling, we're tabling the, do we have a motion to table the action item E first? We have to finish that.
Oh, no, I think we should go ahead with that. We want a petition with state to, although it's going to be, you know, a couple of years.
Yeah, I mean.
But.
Okay, then say it, and then we'll forget, and then we'll have to do it again anyway, so. Go ahead, make the motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve action item E.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt's roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or.
Commissioner Freeman?
Or.
Commissioner Maybe?
Or.
Commissioner News?
Or.
Motion passes. Now, say your second motion, or your you need a second.
Oh, okay.
Motion.
I'd like to put on the next agenda amending whatever the ordinance is regarding planning board membership. If that makes sense.
Application requirements?
Yeah, application requirements. Eliminating the freeholder requirement in city code.
Before we second, I wish Michael was off mute so we could hear all that. Is that good enough, Michael, or do you need it more specific? I saw you almost fall out of your chair.
That's all we needed, 11:58. Good enough for me.
I'll second.
Yeah, I know, come on, man, give me a break.
All right. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Hoagland roll call, please. Oh, no, we don't have a, that's just a recommendation. Forget it. We don't vote on that. Um.
Clarissa.
All right. We are moving on to city manager comments. And I know that you're going to say no tonight.
Action item F.
Yeah, you forgot that one.
Oh, my God. Oh, it was hidden under all my scribbles.
Yeah, we're making sure this goes past midnight, okay?
Well, I know my opinion on this, but I mean, the country's opening up. It's time for us to open up.
I'm ready to go back in person for what it's worth.
I never said I was anti-person. I said I'm pro-hybrid.
Oh, I know that, hon. Yeah, I know, I understand that.
So I, I'm just saying, I think we should have a virtual option still for people because we have the equipment now.
Isn't that cool? We had 62 people at one point on this, you know, that's public participation.
Quentin, we had it like so much participate, participation at every planning board meeting. And it's awesome. Yeah, it is, and I want to like maintain that because it democracy and action.
So Chair, if I may be the wet blanket.
Yep. Do we have the technology is the question?
Yeah, I'll make this meeting longer and, and talk about some of the technical aspects of it. We don't really have a good way to mesh at least Zoom with an in-person meeting. Because it's hard to see both the commission and the speakers and the people who are attending virtually. And honestly, we don't have the staff to run all of those things at one time. There are options that I think we can use. In fact, I have a meeting later in the week with the county on possibly some shared spaces and some shared technology to do that. I think we could if we could do the, the, the standard conference call if we wanted to. It's, it's harder to maintain. Especially we do have a lot of participants. It's harder to know who's participating and how it works. But especially if we go back to the community room. There's, there's not enough audio ports to hook Zoom into an audio port, to put it in the speaker system to make sure it's on the recording. Especially because we're using the recording as our official minutes. So if someone's talking on Zoom and it isn't picked up, then we're going to miss parts of the of the presentations or the public comment that won't be recorded. It's it's hard to, to mesh the two of an in-person and, and Zoom, and there's ways to do it. We just don't have the technology to currently do it. And that's not true. We have some of the technology. We don't have all the equipment to actually do it, or the design to make sure that it works right. I would recommend that we pursue that. I think that's a great goal for us to get to, is where we can seamlessly do both Zoom, because we're, I think everyone's really used to Zoom and can use it now. And in-person meetings, but I think we're going to, at least in the short term, going to have to pick between Zoom and in-person. And maybe if we want to do in-person, we can supplement it with with a conference call, with some of the Polycom equipment that we already have. But I, I would like to get to the point where we have the Zoom room type of technology where it's specifically designed, and we have the audio and the video equipment, so that we make sure that we meet all the requirements of open meeting laws.
All right, so do we want to move forward with an in-person with a, a option? A tech option that makes it available for other people not able to attend in person? To give their feedback? So next meeting, we would be in-person with a tech option for participation, and then moving towards a Zoom type solution as soon as we can.
I am not in favor of that. I do not have stock in Zoom, and I do not love Zoom, but I do love people in Livingston coming to meetings and expecting them to learn a new technology. And if it's anything like the audio where I called into that executive session, that was so hard to hear you all, and Zoom is infinitely better even without video to preserve the bandwidth. The sound is so much better, and I am not willing to cut the community out of the conversation. I know that we can do this. I know that we can figure it out. And I'm willing to do the unpleasant Zoom meeting so that I can have the pleasantness of more people at meetings. We're going to lose everybody. If we switch it and change the technology, and they're going to have to call in a different way, we're going to lose people, and I don't want to lose the public. That's just me.
Um, I think I feel like we, well, first of all, when you called in, we didn't have microphones. Which I think we're, would have been a positive factor. I do want to start to see people engaging in, in public discourse. We are seeing that shift back to that style. I mean, in other commissions, other councils and boards are meeting in person. And maybe it is a bit traditional, but there's, I think there's a place for both and that we can find both, and I think it's time for us to get back to in-person and then add and do what we can to continue to engage the public. Because I think it will happen. Even school boards are getting people still coming. It's not like no one's coming to the school board meetings. Not just ours, but I read a lot of news about how meetings are shifting. People are still participating. So I would like to see us in person with an option.
I don't know if that's anything we need to vote on, but I mean, I understand Commissioner Newt's arguments here. But I, I think we can keep working towards getting the, a, a better hybrid situation, man, a polygon and stuff like that. Because the particip- participation has been excellent, but there's also people that don't have computers either, so, you know. I can't imagine, oh, but, you know. But yeah, in-person. I'm ready for in-person. And working on our technology with the county, trying to get that up and running so we can include as many people as possible virtually.
People that don't have computers, by the way, Quentin, can call into Zoom, and I think that's what they've been doing on the boards.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're right.
Doesn't the, what does the county commission do? Don't they have virtual meetings at the fairgrounds? Who, does anybody know?
I don't.
Yeah, they, they've been doing virtual.
So how can the county commission do virtual, but we don't, why don't we have the equipment if they do? I don't understand the. I, I think I missed something.
I know, I think they've been doing the same way we have, haven't they? Yeah.
But if they're doing it at the fairgrounds, they also have space for people to come in person?
That, I don't know, I, I apologize.
Are they doing both?
Is doing any in-person meeting yet?
Yeah.
I think it's all in right now. Webex or call-in, I believe.
So the commissions together, what are we seeing? What are they doing?
No, I don't think anyone's meeting together in person yet in the county.
So the commission's not even together, and then they, or the staff? And then, but they have call-in of Webex or Zoom or both, or?
I don't, in fact, I don't even sure they're using Webex. Most of it's telephonically. When we participated, it's been by call-in. I don't, in fact, I don't even sure they're using WebEx. Most of it's telephonically. When we participated, it's been by call-in.
Not, no Zoom?
No, the, the county never used them.
Yeah.
They use the WebEx. We've used WebEx some, but I don't think they did for county meetings. I'm not sure about that, though. Courtney, have you seen anybody using WebEx for the county meetings?
The county has been using some sort of a WebEx because I've been watching them. So you can, they're, they're like this, but not Zoom.
And they do have the Granicus system, which I don't think they're using yet, but they could to do that virtually. But even then, they were still using just call-in on, for most of their county meetings.
So I was told that there's equipment at the fairgrounds and that the city has purchased at least one of the monitors there. So what's that equipment for then?
I am not aware of us purchasing anything for the fairgrounds. Unless it was done a long time ago.
Okay, um.
I am, I'm sorry, Manager. I am meeting with them on Friday. I think right now they're looking at the library as a, a place to set up a hybrid type chambers for both city and county.
So I have two questions for well, first of all, other commissioners, Warren and Mel, do you have a an idea on what you guys think? And then Michael, the request was to bring some options. What, what was? What were the options from the city is?
So our, our really options are full in-person meetings, as we've always done, where they're still on YouTube, so people could watch them. Uh, at least to participate that way, but they couldn't give input. Uh, they could send written input ahead of time if they wanted. Uh, we could stay full virtual and meet as we have. And I think the only other option is to meet in person with with a call-in, like the speakerphone option, or to meet virtually until we can create a space that would let us do the hybrid. I think in a fully functioning manner. Um, those would be, those would be the options that are easy to do. Um, we've been talking with the county. We're on about our third space of trying to find the right place to be able to do joint chambers. I think that's the way to go um, as we move forward because there's also some ARP communications grants that we could apply for, uh, to help fund some of it. You know, this was, this was the concept we looked at for the, for the civic center of being able to turn that into that kind of space. But as we've looked more at replacing the civic center, now we're trying to find a different space where we can do that. We looked at the fairgrounds, but they're looking at increasing their operations there a lot and they would prefer not to have commission meetings in the fairgrounds. Uh, so that's why we're looking at some other places uh, that we could do that. The, I think the, the large community room in the, in the library is probably at least the size of the community room, so we could have the same in-person participation that we normally had. And then if we actually set it up for the virtual aspect, then we can seamlessly have hybrid meetings in that space. And that's, that's what we're currently pursuing. I, I have a meeting later this week with the county on that.
Okay, thank you. And Mel and Warren?
No, I'm sure I'd, I'd prefer to have uh, in-person meetings. I'm sure that uh, there would be fewer participants, but uh, I think this sets up real bad psychology. The uh the virtual aspects of things and there's no real connectivity. And that problem's been pretty much expanding. I think it'd be better if we were in-person meetings.
I feel the same way, Drell. In-person.
Okay, um, well, it looks like we have four to one for in-person. Uh, do we? We'd like the city, though it, it looks like we want to pursue some type of technology so we can get in the, as many people engaged and moving towards a hybrid potentially of a, a Zoom is what we'd really like. Um, I think it sounds like from what everyone's saying, but having some type of participate, way of participating without being in attendance.
That's good.
All right. Next meeting will be in-person with um, some type of hybrid potential.
I don't, I don't know why I have to be the wet blanket tonight, but we can't do the next meeting because we've already noticed that for some of the ordinances.
Oh, good point.
So that's already been noticed as a Zoom meeting and we may even have the next one and, and we will do some research on that. But definitely not the next one. And then we will, we'll see if we can do the second meeting in June or the first meeting in July and we'll get that information to you.
Why would it, why for the two, you know, a month from now? What is it that we're obligated?
We, we might have already noticed some things with Zoom meetings, but we just need to double check to make sure that we have it. If we haven't, we're fine for the second meeting.
Okay.
Then we'll have to wait one more meeting.
All right. That makes sense. Okay. Okay, done. Action item, what is that? Z?
Chair Hogland, I was just gonna say, I don't think that was ever opened to public comment.
Jonathan Hedy. Yeah, I think, I don't think I don't know. It, it was not, but sometimes it, because it's not necessarily a decision, it's just moving back to our our normal. I don't know if we treat it the same way and advice. I wanna make sure I don't miss out on public comment either. Courtney, should we open it to public? I didn't know if this was one of those. Sometimes we have a few things like you're just like keeping with organizing commission stuff. I wanna make sure we're doing it correctly, although I have no problem with it, with public comment either.
Yeah, your um your ability to take public comment is required on any item where you're gonna make a decision and you can ask for public comment on any discussion or item. So if you have somebody who's offering public comment, you can take it.
Okay, perfect. Well, and sometimes it's just like, you know, the normal workings of the commission, so I wasn't sure. Let's open it up to public comment. Any public comment?
Jonathan Hedinger, two, 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 two will drive. Um, I just wanted to say, I just think that the public comment during the Zoom meetings has been really great and unprecedented. Like tonight you had sixty-four people um, attend and I just really think it's imperative to have some sort of hybrid option. And I don't think it's worth sacrificing that if you can't figure it out to have in-person meetings because you had so many people that are able to do that tonight. And especially when your meeting lasts almost seven hours, it's a lot easier on the public to be at home uh, rather than at the meeting uh, for seven hours. And I just think that uh, there's a lot of value in having that much public and all that flexibility. So thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Moving on, city manager comments. It looks like Michael.
Um, the only thing I have for you, ma'am, is that we actually looked up the notifications and there is a, a notice that'll go in the paper tomorrow that puts the second June meeting in Zoom. So we'll have to wait for the first July meeting if you wanna go in person.
All right. It gives us a little more time to figure it out.
Yeah, we'll just need to know before the next meeting so that if we notice more ordinances, we don't, we know which way to order, uh, to notice.
Well, we, we know that we're requesting that, that first of July meeting is in person.
Okay, then we can certainly, we'll notice anything in the future that the first meeting in July will be in person.
But we're gonna try get a hybrid as much as possible by then as well. Okay.
We will continue down that, that road and see what we can do.
All right. City Commission comments.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll be, I'll be pleased if, that we've got it figured out by then cuz that's been several months then to figure it out. And uh, over a month from now, um, I just wanna say I am so proud of everyone that's on screen for staying awake this long. Good job. That's it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Wow.
Um, Warren?
Uh, yeah, the endurance test is uh, everybody's pretty much passed, so uh I guess that's a good thing.
I'm passing the baton is what I'm passing. I could tell you. Talk about endurance. Um all right, thank you, Warren. Mel?
I say, I think the growth meeting we had tonight was one of the best meetings uh, I've seen on the commission in ten years. So I wanna thank for Melissa and all the people she's been working with. It's fantastic to hear the comments and like just all good stuff. And uh is, it looks like a good future for, for the city. I wanna keep that momentum. So I wanna thank everybody who uh had anything to do with, that was really great. I'm a through. Good work on what everybody.
Thanks, Mel.
I'll echo Mel's comments as well. Yeah, great participation, great job with planning board. You guys are incredible and uh wow, um, great document and I'm still going through it and uh and actually kind of enjoying going through it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Um, my one item tonight was to talk about like one of the biggest issues we've dealt with and that is the overpass-underpass issue. But tonight might not be the night. Um, but I do want us to put it on as an action item in the next month. That we've gotta move this forward. We've been delaying it. We've got to figure something out. We delayed it for the growth policy. Now we don't have to delay it. No more excuses. Let's move. And I had some comments from a citizen who called the other day, but I'll share those next time.
Okay.
All right. So Michael, please put on as an action item, steps forward for um underpass uh crossing, we're calling it the crossing, sorry. Okay. Do I have a second for that?
Yeah, you got it for me.
Watch, everyone say, no, we don't want it.
Oh, I know. I second, second big time. I've been getting same, same heat you have.
Yes, um, that's all from me. Um all right, do I have a uh, motion for adjournment? Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at twelve oh two AM. No, twelve twenty-one. I mean, wait, look at, I can't even read. I'm so tired. You, you're right. My dyslexia of numbers that I didn't know I had just happened. Um, twelve twenty-one AM. All right, goodbye.
Good job, Madam Chair. Thank you.